Okay, we'll get started. Call to order the May 25th meeting of the Cold Spring Planning Board. Tonight, we've got one item. Tonight's just a public hearing. I'll read the notice. The Planning Board of the Village of Cold Spring will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 25th, 2017 at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter. As the matter may be heard, at the Village Hall, 85 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, to consider the site plan approval application by Hector, Marcos, Antonio, and Rincon Argentino to exchange slash expand an existing cafe/restaurant used by eliminating a residential apartment within the same building. The building is located at 21 Main Street in Cold Spring, New York. The subject property is designated as Tax Map Section 48.12, Lot 1, Lot 6901. The property is located within the B1 zoning district as well as the National Historic District. Okay, so we're gonna hold a public hearing tonight. Let's start with Marcos. If you could just kind of just introduce, just obviously we've got a public hearing.
Sure.
Obviously, just for the record, just introduce what the project is.
Okay. Yes. Everybody knows we're called, we call it a casino, it's the coffee shop, right? Okay. So, we started off as small as possible to get started, let's put it that way. And very uncomfortable with our, let's say, working area. And we thought about making the place a little more accessible to work, basically, and in the future have a commercial kitchen, if it's possible. First, we have to have a space, and then we'll go towards that. But mainly, my need of expanding, and the only way to expand, because the coffee shop is in one corner, and surrounding the coffee shop, it was our apartment house. The only way to expand is eliminating two walls, moving out, which we already did last week, and make, let's say, bedrooms back part of the coffee shop, which I want to enlarge somehow, to separate different services. Let's say, we have the espresso machine, we have the cookie showcase, and the gelato, all one on top of the other, exaggerating a bit. But really, it's all piled up, so we're trying to put things in different places, basically to be more comfortable and be more, let's say, neatly presented. That's the main idea. And that's why I want to convert our residential area, which I said was surrounding the coffee shop, into all coffee shop. And hopefully, once it's done, is what we're hoping that it will be. I don't know, anything else, anybody, any questions?
No, that's great. So it's basically just taking the whole first floor and creating and...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just a suggestion. If anyone's interested, he has a drawing here, he can show them.
There's some extras.
This is a picture right there.
So, we don't have the existing condition, which is a two-bedroom apartment?
I'm sorry.
But in the top right of the drawing, that kind of, that bell, was the existing residential apartment.
Very clearly seen what I was saying, surrounding, let's say, the coffee shop would be this square area here, the existing, and surrounding it was our apartment house. What, something I didn't mention, in one corner of the floor is the existing boiler for the rest of the building. That's a space, which might be three by eight, no, fifteen by twenty feet, which is the boiler room. That separates what I'm about to convert. So this is the front of the building, the existing bay window, and at the far left is all our, let's say, attending area, which, like I would say, was very narrow. We're working, both my wife and myself are working in a space where there's probably a foot and a half, and we have to squeeze by with hot coffee and hot cocoa, which most, how many times, we bumped each other and we messed up our clothing, but we didn't get burnt. And we don't want to get to that point. So, that's basically the reason why we started thinking about making the whole place working area.
Okay, great. And then we also have the, we actually notify the neighbors, actually, there were the...
Okay. Yes, this is the only neighbor that received the letter. He came by, he crossed the road, that's where the dance studio is. That's the owner of the building, and he signed me that. This is...
We did not include this one, though, right?
Anyway, just in case.
Well, not anyway, we're just, this is a process here.
Okay, sure. It was three or four, sir?
Let me check.
Mm-hmm.
I think it was just the three, if I recall.
I don't know why, but we mentioned the dance studio.
No, it's fine. You can't, it's overdoing, it's fine. No, it's just, it's underdoing. No, it's not an issue at all.
Okay.
Yeah, so 70, 68, maybe 3. So it was the Dallas House and the blue house right across the street? But that's fine, I mean, the more you send, the better. And then the neighbor to the left, 70?
We got the Dallas, which is Arizona, like I said, and maybe she called the office here. That's what I sent, and they brought it back, because they said it was vacant, the post office.
But this doesn't look like it was ever canceled.
I sent it, and it came back to me.
When the post office processes mail, they cancel out the stamp? This was mailed?
Yes. That's the...
And so they...
They sent it back, because they say it was vacant. This was also vacant. Andrew Kepler, which is a less... That is right across the street. That's the owner of the building, right across the street. It all came back? Yes. It's kind of weird, usually I put a little red stamp on it.
Yeah, you cancel the postage. I've got way more mailing experience than I care about.
But this, oh, here's the receipt.
All right, so let's...
Oh, there you go.
Well, that's the receipt of mailing, yeah.
Okay. And neighbors wrote these letters, let's see.
Yeah, we got the letter from Need of Talent in support?
Yes.
Okay. Hang on, this is confusing. I just want to make sure that we got the property ranges, so it's obviously neighbor notification is an important part of the code.
So we leave letters back from some of the neighbors?
Except one. Except one. The other three were sent back to me, saying it was vacant.
Resident?
These three?
Yes.
They're sent back?
Yes.
And then three others, looks like?
No, no, no. It was three total. I sent four by mistake. I sent one to the dance studio, but...
And that one came back as well?
No, 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 no. No. That's the only one that was received, and the one that wasn't supposed to be sent, I'm sorry.
Is it vacant? Wasn't he sending it to the owner?
Yeah, so you got the addresses from the, where'd you get the addresses?
From, well, you told me the Village Town Assessor's Office.
So it would've gone to an owner, regardless of whether an owner was vacant? Maybe it was an absentee owner?
They're very clean to have gone through the mail service. I don't know what, considering their stamp, either returned to sender or...
Well, here's the stamp, so they went out.
But that is all...
That's true. That's a receipt of mailing, yeah.
So they definitely went out. Which is why they sent them back vacant, and I guess... They both vacant, and it's the post office. This is what you gave me, this is what you gave me, Matt, to go to the Village Town...
Building, you know, addresses here. Wait, 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 wait. So Nina's address is actually up here at Chestnut, she lives at Chestnut Ridge. She doesn't live at that building. Right, so then the question is, whatever the assessor's office has... And these people probably live somewhere else. Right, so the question is, do you send them, I don't know how he was instructed, was he instructed to send them?
To the assessor's office. Get the address from the assessor's office. That's what we do.
The owners or occupants?
The owner, the owner of the property. The mailing address of tax.
Of the tax, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, excuse me. Basically, basically, the reason for that was for them to be notified, right? So what I did, what I did, I don't know if I did right or no, but I did, I went personally, I even found Nina, that was in Arizona, and she called, like I said, Mary. But the rest of the other people, even though I said, I received the mail, like, vacant, and they came up, and they signed, each one signed the note, notifying that they knew about this meeting, and of course, begging me up into my project.
Right, but it sounds like they instructed you to mail it to the owners of record, as per the tax assessor's records, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because that's the safest thing to do, don't you, I mean, that's...
And Nina doesn't live in that property. So, I mean, it's, I mean, you can see how the public hearing goes and see what you guys want to do. I don't know if it's a huge effect, but it's substantial, whether it's substantial enough.
See if there's any disagreement.
Okay. Okay, so we had 68, 70, and... So 70 is 15 Main?
Seventy, yes, maybe.
Did you have 15 Main, John?
Yes, British Dave, maybe? Dave Land?
To British Dave?
Yeah, that's the owner of the building.
Okay, so what's on record is 15 Main Street is EB2 LLC in Beacon, New York, at 16 Hannah Lane, so...
She sold the place last year. I don't know even...
I mean, if he went to the assessor's office and asked, can I get the address for these people, they gave him those addresses, he sent them out?
Right.
I'm looking at the assessor's addresses, is what I'm looking at.
Right, okay.
Unless there's just something that's not updated, so we got 68, 70, and 83. Then 83 is Padilla, all right? 83 is 25 Main? So we're doing, one of the parts in our code that's an important piece is that you notify the neighbors around you, there's a blast zone, which has always been a really important piece of the process, so that people know that something's happening. All the better for folks to know something's happening before, than after, and then, you know, people have, you know, issues. So, we're just checking to make sure that we've got notification. Joseph Padilla, P.O. Box 51, Cold Spring. Yes, see, these were just mailed to the address. So, we're gonna have to kind of set that aside for right now, just we'll continue with the, I'm not quite sure what the remains.
But about 24 issued.
One second. That's an address in the city. Linda Mello, 161 West 54.
Who's Andrew Kepler?
He's the gentleman that owns the building where the, that's the one I was supposed to send, where the dance studio, yes.
Yeah, more than we asked for, there's no downside. Okay, all right, let's continue. Okay. We'll open it up for public comment, so everybody can comment on the application and questions. Okay, great. Anything in support?
I am in support. It's been a long time coming, so...
Kathy, can you give the clerk your name?
Catherine Carnivale, 10 Fair Street, Cold Spring.
Okay, great.
How did you find out about the public hearing?
I found out from Marcos. I've known...
I can tell, he was in the newspaper twice.
And it was in the newspaper.
That part I did.
Yeah. I have known both of them for a long time.
Okay, great. All right.
I have a question.
Okay, wait, so discuss.
Does someone have any comment?
Yeah, I'm actually here in support of Marcos. I live at, my name's Mark Moramar, 22 Market Street, I'm just around the corner. I had seen the posting in the paper. I also frequent, frequent Argentina. I think it's an asset to that part of Main Street.
So you've also supported him, and you saw the notification?
Absolutely. You know, both of them as individuals, and the way they're conducting their business down there, I think is an asset to the way we do things in Lower Main, but sort of, you know, we're a little bit sleepier down there.
A little quieter, yeah.
But that's nice, because, you know, they're putting out, you know, a bowl for dogs, and, you know, you're not, you're encouraging people to come to Main, the lower part of Main Street, hang out for a little bit, which I think we'd want to do, without it getting, you know, crazy. They have the right aesthetic there, I think, and the sorts of things. So, I mean, I'd love to see them serving more sorts of proper foods. I've been telling Marcos for a long time, I'd like them to do, as a, I lived in Argentina for a while, and so I'm a big fan of the barbecue, the asado that they do, and I'd love them to be able to do that out back at some point. So, yeah, I'm totally in support of what it is in there.
Okay, great. All right, so should we hold public comment open, considering the notice, or that's just neighbor notification, or...
It's up to the board. I mean, it was published in the paper, so obviously some people saw it. Whatever addresses, if these were the addresses that were given by the assessor's office, they're wrong, because they're not the addresses of record for the owner.
Who'd you see in the assessor's office?
Was a lady in the back. I won't tell the name, just in case. It was, oh, she was, she was the one that, I gave this map, and she looked everything up, and she wrote, and she wrote down in a piece of paper, all the addresses, and the names of the people who owned the place, and I just did what I was told.
So she didn't give you their mailing addresses? She gave you the addresses for the street address?
I told her what I was doing. I was, I was supposed to send these letters to the owners of these properties, like I was told, to notify them of what I was about to do. And I needed to reach them and get these letters, have these letters to them to read, to read. And I just sent everything?
But they're all to 15, 24, and 25, right? Just the street address?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, frankly, I'm not following, because you don't need to go to the assessor's office to get the addresses on the building. I mean, the point of going to the assessor's office, as we had said, was to get wherever the taxes are mailed to, to mail to the owner of the building. Because obviously, it's the owner of the building that has the most vested interest. The owner of the building is the one that's paying property taxes. And part of our public, part of our code is that folks can come in and talk about a change of use. It's great that people have support. It's also, people also have to sometimes swing the other way. So the best thing is to get everybody on board, to know the change is happening, and so that's why we asked to mail to the owner of the building, because they're the ones that have the long-term impact, not a tenant, not somebody, not, you know, not a renter, not, so that they, it wouldn't be necessary to go to the assessor's office to get the mailing address that's already on the building. But let's, I think we'll move off of that, I don't think we have any...
I just want to, just want to make one comment. I went to these people. I went to the people, and they signed it, each and every one of them. More than if I did wrong or right with the address. I went to the people, there's the people, their signature.
Wait, wait, the people in Beacon, the people in New York City?
Well, you couldn't have gotten, there's not the woman in it, it sounds like there's an owner, the blue building?
The one, yeah.
Directly across the street.
He's the owner of the building, so I told him about what was going on, and he signed the paper. He's the actual owner, because they told me that...
Linda Mello?
No. Dave, British Dave. He's the owner, he's the owner, yeah, his name is British.
His first name is British?
Yes, I was surprised. He is the owner of the building, which Ellis Bellas was last year. He sold it to this guy.
David Land, is that his name?
Well, David Land, he said his name was British. That's why I directed to him, and he came personally and read everything and signed it.
He could be the managing member of whatever LLC owns the property.
He's the owner. No, Ellis Bellas doesn't own the place. That's for sure.
To the left. The building to the left has been sold?
Yes. Yes.
Have he sold it?
Yes, she sold it to this gentleman.
And what name do you have for that building?
That's not updated.
What address is that one?
That's 15 Main Street.
15 Main Street. Yes, it's EB2 LLC.
Okay.
But the assessor's records probably take a while to update.
Yeah, so they must've sold it recently.
They sold it last year.
It should be fairly recent. Okay.
They may have British Dave, just...
It's now British Dave. Silly me.
That's what it means. I even haven't spoken, if you want to call him.
Formerly, formerly American Dave.
He told me, he told me his name was that, and then I see he was signing the same different date, I don't know, but he told me that it was his name.
Well, the record should've been updated on March 1st, that's when they update all the...
All the taxes?
Yeah. If they close before then, it should be updated, but...
Yeah, the last sale is in 2011.
And if it says EB, EB LLC, is that Ellis Bellas LLC, right?
Which one's Ellis Bellas?
It's 15.
What's the parcel? No, I'm sorry, parcel, 70, that's what it's, I keep translating in my head, 70.
Yeah, so, how long have you been in business there?
This July is gonna be two years.
Two years?
Yes, July 3rd is our second anniversary.
Are you gonna have nine seats?
Uh, no.
Your last email to me was that you were gonna increase it to 12, but your drawing still shows nine.
Yes, that was the initial drawing, is 12. Well, the thing is, we have more seats.
Well, we're in a public hearing, so...
No, no, wait a minute, here, I got two, I got three more seats outside.
Outside, we said we're not gonna count those, though, remember?
Okay, okay. That's why I said 12, because in actual, actually, they're gonna be like, those seats, all these are gonna be used, both inside and outside. Is that, you said that you didn't want to count it, because I was gonna take it in, I was, I was gonna...
All right, so if we just take the patio, if we just draw an arrow, just to move it into the room?
Yes.
Okay. Because we don't, the Cold Spring doesn't currently have any outside dining on their code, we need to address that. So there's really no way for us to address, like, what the requirement is, it would be kind of a gray area. And historically, since it's already been around, it's our historical memory, they haven't been counting those. So we're gonna, you want to do application?
We'll do nine, we'll do nine.
No, no, 12 is fine.
I just don't want, I just don't want to put an extra seat there, oh, you said nine, 10, you know?
Well, that's just it, you're here, you're here, so definitely get what you need. That way, then you can do whatever you want, you can start offering, you know, more product, more seats.
More than less.
More money.
I'll do 12, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, whatever you need, get it on the plan. Okay, so you want to do 12?
I just want to be more than correct, I just want to, in case I need, I just...
No, no, now's the time.
How many, how many seats do you currently have?
We have nine now. Nine. 12, 12, I'm sorry, 12 with the three seats that are outside, which didn't count. But, in case doesn't count, coming to the situation, actual situation, we'll put those, we'll add those three seats inside, no big deal.
Okay, great.
More than less. I don't have it right now, but...
Great. And then tomorrow, drop off the existing, so we have an existing plan that shows the old layout, we don't have that?
Yes.
And that one, make sure that one shows nine seats inside as well?
Yes.
And that way, we can come see the before and the after?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we'll, I think we can close public comment, do you agree?
Yeah, must the board members have any questions, or...
I have a comment. The fact that he's been in business there for two years, and has been advertised, it's unfortunate this glitch occurred, you know, and I agree wholeheartedly, you know, what you said, is that, you know, we try to avoid conflict down the road, but the fact that he's been in business for two years, he's not changing the exterior of the building, he's actually getting rid of an apartment.
Residential, yeah.
Yeah, I think those are all positive things, and the fact that the only people that came to the meeting support him, you know, I would think if someone didn't support him, they would've seen it in the paper, even if they were one of these glitches that occurred. You know, so I think the probability is that there is no opposition, that's what I'm guessing. If he was a brand-new business, then I think it might be a little different, the fact that he's been there for two years and...
Right, and you have discretion, I mean, the notice can have little glitches here and there, it's whether it's substantial enough.
Right.
So you have, you have discretion, it doesn't have to be perfect.
And that's the, and we've had this several times, is that neighbors have said they didn't get notice, or they didn't get constructive notice. Constructive notice basically means, when could you reasonably have known that something was happening? Because then, the way the code works is then there's timelines that run to say, okay, then you want to, you want to raise an issue. You all may remember some of these in the past, that just, you know, that dragged on forever, where neighbors have issue with something to do. So the notice is important, so then you can kind of, you can, you know, put a stake in the ground and say, this is where the notice started, you have X number of days to respond. So the notice is just becomes important, but I don't think it's, I agree, I don't think any, I agree, I think the application, in my opinion, but I've seen only one person, is more favorable, because it, you know, it reduces the residential use, which reduces long-term parking, and then just basically takes existing use and adds three seats, it's really, I mean, I think that...
I think the primary issue would be if he was expanding his patio, like, you know? I mean, something on the outside that would really bother the neighbors. Everything is being done on the inside.
Yep, yep.
So I think this is a plus for that side of the tracks.
Great.
The community.
The other side of the tracks?
Positive side.
You can say good and bad side.
Other side of the tracks. That wasn't, didn't mean it in a negative way, and you know it didn't. It's a nice, very nice section of town.
That's pretty good, isn't it?
So I think it's a plus.
Okay, great. Any other comment? Yeah, no, like I said, I think it's favorable, because, you know, residential, obviously the big thing in Cold Spring, it's we all know, is parking. So to reduce, to remove a residential apartment, which could require two cars just kind of sitting there while everybody's at work, or on vacation, or whatever, then that goes away, and then you go to short-term trip parking, and I suspect a lot of your customers aren't really parking anywhere, they probably park somewhere else, they're walking to, you know, it's a, it's more of a, it's not really a destination in and of itself, it's to and from other things. So I think that it's a, you know, with the, with applications that we see that put a demand on the parking, this is not one of them. I mean, this is, and it's, it's very much in line with the 2010 change to the code to add these parking waivers, which is to, a way to make a commercial change of use applications, to legalize them, basically, by, you know, one space for three. And what the point of that code is, is it's not really a shell game or a Ponzi scheme, it's really to then take those monies, earmark those monies, and then use them towards parking efforts. One of the efforts that those are, because I think it's important for folks to understand, because selling spaces that aren't really spaces is hard for folks to understand, so I, every chance I get, I try to, like, you know, make sure people understand the message is that one... So I, every chance I get, I try to like, you know, make sure people understand the message is that, um, one thing that the monies we use for was to purchase the parking meters down at the municipal lot, which has generated a significant amount of revenue. Well, they'll probably use, you know, the earmarked parking funds to, to look at parking studies on Main Street. Cause clearly, it's, it doesn't get, you know, it's not getting any better. So, um, that's the point of those parking waivers. And it's, it's, it's clearly in line with what the legislative intent was, is your, your request for parking waivers that would be required, which would be twelve. So it'd be. So it'd be three parking waivers. And then what that does is then it makes you, you know, fully compliant with the code. And then, um, you can kind of go to town and hopefully have a, have a great success. Great. Anything else?
So the seating is actually the same, it's just they're reducing the apartment.
The seating goes up by three, cause he has nine, now he wants to go twelve.
So it goes up by three, but then the parking demand is reduced by eliminating.
Two, yeah.
The apartment, which is that two spaces per?
Two spaces per apartment unit, yes, what the code has.
But he actually didn't have permission for the patio before.
Well, that, we're gonna have to, the patio, we are gonna have to put in the code as a resolution. I had just shot an email over to the chair, the vice chair of the, of the HDRB to make sure they had seen the patio and the pergola. Cause you had said it was approved, they had no knowledge of it. So we'll let, we'll have to put that in there, just that, that, you know, cause what the planning board doesn't wanna do is, is approve work. And obviously, it's shown on our plans that we're not certain it's approved. So we'll, we can make it a condition of our, our resolution that any of the exterior work either existing. Um, that, well, first, if the resolution, there's no, there's no exterior work planned, that there's no exterior work planned in this application. But the existing exterior that's shown, which is the patio and the pergola, is approved by the HDRB. I know there was an issue with the fence, um, and then a split rail fence, and then a six-foot fence. Um, and fencing is another big, you know, kind of hot topic around here, especially anything more than four feet is a, is a, is lots of discussion. Um, and requires a variance. So there was a six-foot fence that went up, but then I know you took it back down. Um, there was, you know, the, as with all the other properties, or most of the other properties, unless the owner has purchased it, the stoop is the village property. And so there was, there was some activity there with respect to hard pavement surface and, um, and furniture, which I think has since been removed. But what we wanna make sure is that what we sign off on is actually, is, is, is up to code and is approved by all the other, um, by the other involved agencies. So the only one that would be involved so far, other than the, the village board, who is, who's the final authority on issuing parking waivers. And then the, um, in the HDRB, well, you know, not so much involved in secret, because the work is already there. But just that we put it in our resolution to just say, make sure that you go get it approved. And then we'll make the building inspector aware that, um, that he's gotta follow up on this. Um, and that it's, um, or, did you, did you ever receive a certificate of appropriateness for the, uh? You did?
Yes, Bill gave me one, they put it on the wall.
Those don't come from Bill.
Excuse me?
Those don't come from Bill. They come from the HDRB, the Historic District Review Board.
Yeah, well, um.
You gave a building permit?
I, I have a building, I have a permit, let's say, for having the shop there, let's say, uh, from, from the village.
Certificate of occupancy?
Exactly.
Yeah.
That I have.
Right.
It's on the wall.
Okay.
Eh, and Bill came a couple of, yeah, a little more, yeah, a little more than a month ago. And he, and he did the, um, the annual, let's say, inspection and.
An annual inspection?
Well, I don't know, he, he came to do an inspection, a, a building, uh, inspection.
Fire or?
He told me about some, some exit signs, I put everything he told me.
Yeah, but he fired, okay.
I, he, he checked everything, he put this, put that, and then put everything what he asked. I don't know if that, if, if that's something, let's say, uh.
It's different.
Un, completely unrelated, yeah. Okay, so that's, that's what we'll do, we'll put it in the resolution.
Put it in the resolution and, um, go let the building inspector know.
And I think we should make it a condition of issuing some permit. Because what we don't wanna do is issue permits on work when prior, when, if there are existing violations. And obviously, through no fault of yours, the, the original change of use, the change of use from a hundred percent office to about, uh, you know, maybe seventy, no, maybe sixty percent residential, forty percent eating and dining establishment, was never, was never processed. So with respect to what the village records show, it's still, it's still a real estate office. So obviously, that's, um, we'll clear that up tonight with your change of use application. So we gotta get that approved. Um, and then, but what we don't wanna do is issue, have village issue another permit until we make sure that everything is, is, um, is checked off. Right? And so the, the only, the only possibility, the, the way it works is, in the, in the historic district, you apply for a building permit. When the building inspector gets your request, he then denies it and refers you to the Historic District Review Board to, when you're making any exterior changes or signage. And then you go back and once you get what they have, which is called a certificate of appropriateness, and it's a little confusing, cause obviously, everything's a certificate. But this is called a certificate of appropriateness. That goes then back to the building inspector, and then the building inspector receives that, and then he issues a building permit. So the question is whether or not that certificate of appropriateness is exist and fi, and in the file. So that's what we'll just, we wanna kind of, uh, close the loop on. What we don't wanna do is work against our other boards by showing something on a plan and me stamping it and signing off on behalf of the village. And then it looks like then that the, that the work was approved by the planning board, or is at least filed by the village. So we'll, we'll handle that so we can move on tonight and, uh, and go forward, which was put in the resolution. But it will be a condition of issuing the permit. So that has to be resolved before the permit is issued. Um, we've had a, we just don't wanna fall into old habits of just letting stuff kind of roll on to the next permit, and the next permit, and the next permit. Um, and that's good for you, cause then you're just, you're, you're done.
Yes, um, I'm learning, I'm learning now. I've, I've, I've been learning, I've been learning two years from now, when I started all this. And the, and the only thing I've been doing is whatever I was told to do. And I did everything that I was told. Mainly who was more connected with me in doing this or doing that was Bill.
Bill, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
He told me do this, do that, I did everything. Then when I was gonna make the patio, uh, he said, no, you can't deal that with me, you gotta deal with, that's all. We came, we did it, we, we had a meeting, talked about the fence and all that. He, they, it was a fence, existing fence that had to be moved back, uh, ten feet. Eh, and then, uh, I wanted to expand.
That was the split, the split rail fence? The little log fence?
No, it was, it was a, it was a green fence. It was covering the whole front part of the patio.
Okay.
And that, I want, I requested to move because I explained what I wanted to do. So I wouldn't have people on the sidewalk. And we had a meeting and, and that was, uh, resolved. They accepted, um, what I want. They just gave me a few different fences, which I, that was permitted for me to do. And I did the one, and I took a picture, I, I put the picture here. And then.
Here to who?
I, 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 I gave it, I gave it to Bill. The, the, the photo, which after, I, so they would see that I did what I was told to do.
Were you in, did you sit there and were there a group of people here when you talked about the fence?
It was, it was.
At Bill's office?
Where we were, where we were the last time, no, right here. Where we were.
The small room?
Yeah, the small room, that's where we were sitting.
But it was just Bill?
Do you know what board, do you know what board that was?
It was at the HDRB. Few people. I don't know them all by name, but there was about four or five.
Uh, yeah, no, that's fine, we don't, you know, it doesn't need to be anything. We'll just, we'll just figure out.
They had a workshop.
We had a workshop about the patio.
They had a workshop, but they didn't.
They didn't ever issue this to me.
Right, that's what it sounds like.
Like I said, uh, since I was, started all this, I was doing everything, everything what I was told. Like, last time when we, we were, we, we met, eh, you told me to do this, that, and I did everything that logically I thought had to be done. I couldn't make mistakes, because like I said, I'm learning. But I did what, eventually, common sense, eh, said, like notifying people surrounding my place. And then, of course, uh, notifying the newspaper, then, what's all, so.
Well, that we got, that I, that would go in.
So I, you know, the, the, the.
Okay, great. Alright, um, any other comment?
You moved out already?
Yes.
You're across the street now?
Yes.
The only concern I have, Matt, is that, you know, I'm, I understand the reasoning, I, I do one hundred percent. But he's, he's seeking approval for everything on the inside of the building, not the patio. So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just thinking of a timeline for the guy. Now he's gotta go to, in front of the HDRB? Well, so, so, so let's say, for example, they, hypothetically, they did workshop it. I don't know.
It wasn't hypothetical, it was really.
And, well.
Yeah.
And then he got some type of approval from somebody, but maybe, like you said, it was significant appropriateness.
One of the ladies I remember was, um, Catherine.
Kathleen Foley?
Yes, Catherine Foley was there at that meeting.
Okay, so it, yeah, so I think, I, it may be what, it may be what, um.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, like, you know, for the purpose of time.
It may be what Judith has said. Well, it, we're all subject to time. I mean, that's what it is. I mean, and the last thing we wanna do is have things that are out there that don't meet the design standards, that then you've got an issue because you're trying to do the same thing. See, there's, I don't know, I don't know what's happening, I haven't been, I haven't looked that closely. There's a six-foot fence. We have people requesting six-foot fences all over the village. The last thing we wanna do is have one that somebody says is approved by the village.
Right.
Right? Because, because I'm not gonna sign this and put my name on it.
I got you.
Right? Without saying, without having the caveat of saying, we assume that this patio and pergola are approved, have a certificate of appropriateness for the, one HDRB. If they do not, a permit can't be issued until, until it's determined that, that, that one exists. Right? Cause we wanna make sure that we don't kind of undermine the whole process. Yes, it takes time, and unfortunately, um.
Well, it should have been approved before we put it up.
Exactly. So then that's what we're, and, and no, and, you know, no man escapes time, and no man escapes boards, and no man escapes, or it's not the way it's supposed to work. So I mean, um, and I'm sure they'll get you through as quickly as possible if that does need to, if they've already workedshopped it. If you did what they asked you to do in the workshop, typically, it's a couple of meetings. It's a workshop, and then they come back and then just finalize it, and then they document everything, and then issue the certificate of appropriateness. I think Judith, it sounds like maybe Judith might be right, is it went through a workshop, but it didn't get finished?
If they gave him pictures.
Yeah.
It was probably a workshop.
Give me plans of how, what type of fence they wanted me to put, round and all, you know.
Right, so if you did what they asked, it should be pretty, it should be pretty straightforward. But what we don't wanna do is under, is undermine the, the work of the other boards, and then create issues where you have something that appears to be allowed and endorsed by the village. That may not meet the design standards, and then, you know, and then somebody else has an issue. It's just, it's just, it's just a matter of treating everybody the same, is what it is. And it, it, it does take time. But part of what that does is obviously preserve the character of the village, and the look of the village, and, you know, and architectural fabric. And so, you know, that's the, that's the reality of what we do. But we can, we can take action, it's just, it would just be a condition on our resolution, just to make sure that we're not, um. Because again, with the chair of a board, myself signing off on the plan, and this shown up here, there's a reasonable argument to say.
I'm just thinking, I would hate for him to have to go in front of another public hearing or another.
Well, it, but, but put it this way.
Public hearing at all, but I don't.
He, he should not have started building it until he had a certificate of appropriateness.
Right.
So if he has to go back and fix some things to get it legal, then he will. I mean, these are the laws.
I, no, I, I, I understand.
You talking about me building?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know how things are done, let's say, certification, that. I, I had the meeting, I was told that I had to build this type of fence, and I was approved. Not only the fence, I was approved having the patio where it is right now. It was approved.
Well, then, then all you have to do is show that.
I don't have a paper to show it to you, but they told me, we're good. Go ahead.
Okay, so it may not be an issue, maybe it's there. Maybe, yeah, maybe it's there, it's not make up. And look, I don't, I don't wanna go too far into it, but you wouldn't be the first person where we had advice that wasn't quite correct, right? But what has to happen is that if there is a mistake, and mistakes make, cause we're, you know, we're, we're all humans, right? So it's possible a board can make a mistake. This board isn't bound by those mistakes, nor do we want to compound those mistakes by then signing off on more plans. So what we try to do is just kind of, you know, to do things, um, in a, in a systematic way, so that everybody's treated the same. And at the end of the day, you know, it, it's the same pergola and patio that anybody could build in the historic district. It should be approved, and, and that's reasonable for somebody then to look at yours and say, well, then I should be able to get one, right? So that's, that's really all we're trying to do. And it's not, it may not even be an issue, so let's not make, let's not get ahead of ourselves. If, if there is a certificate of appropriateness on file, well, you know, you'll find it, um, and then the condition's met, and then Bill can issue the permit.
Let me just, eh, make a note. We didn't talk about any pergola. There's no pergola right now.
You have a pergola drawn?
No, well, I draw a pergola because you asked me, tell me where would the pergola be?
No, I asked you to give me a drawing of what is there. Cause what you first gave me was just the interior. And I said, we need a site plan, cause that's, that's, the planning board approves site plan, that's what this is. It's an amended site plan. So it isn't just the, it isn't just the interior, it's the exterior space as well. So there is no pergola?
No. I understood wrong, I'm sorry. I thought it is what, is what we would, let's say, there is no problem, there's no wall that's missing. That's the future drawing, that's the future, uh, way the shop's gonna be. That, that's what I understood, you want it?
But you were building a pergola at one point. You will, you were building a pergola at one point.
I were, and the president of the.
The mayor.
The mayor, he came by and said, Marco, you have to have a permit for this. Perfect, that's how everything started. So I came here, I re, I asked, I requested this, I, I wanted to know how, how, how to go about these things. And Mary explained to me this and this and that. And, uh, then, uh, I said, I'm not, we'll just take the pergola. I, I took everything out, I, I just wanted, basically, what I wanted, a place for people to sit down and not having them on, on, on. So I, 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 I centered my, my, my thoughts in that, to make a floor and have seating area. With some shade. So that's why we focused when we had that meeting.
I think it, I, I think it's fine to show it, and if you decide not to do it, then you, you know what I mean? Well, no, it's not fine to show it.
No, cause.
No, it changes the conversation that we just had.
Again, once you sign the plan, somebody could imply or infer that you approved it.
Yeah.
So the plan just has to show what, what you want. I mean, well, that's really, the floor plan is just here, and what exists.
I, are, is your intention to get the pergola approved?
If it's, if it's possible, yes. If that's gonna bring, uh, any complication, no. That's gonna be something that's gonna, gonna, gonna stop me from doing everything? I said, no, the pergola is, it's relative.
Take it off of here, would, would you sign it, it shouldn't be out.
Okay.
So, so before the HDRB, and, and, and request the pergola, and you get the other stuff up to date, that's up to him.
Okay, so, yeah, so if you could, so two things for tomorrow, or, or, you know, or Tuesday, Monday's holiday. So two things for tomorrow, or, or, you know, or Tuesday, Monday's holiday. Just show the patio, show the twelve seats inside, right? And remove the pergola.
Okay.
Marco, write that down.
Yes, no, 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 I don't want to put that.
I can't. Because we just, we just spent twenty minutes talking about something that does not exist.
Well, that plan doesn't exist, that's what I want to happen. I know, okay, yes, well, that doesn't exist either, that, that's the future plan. Well, the inside and the outside.
We're talking about.
Oh, we're talking about this, yes.
That's.
That's your application.
That's your application.
But there is a deck outside.
And then you put this, there's a deck outside, right? And drawn on here is a pergola.
Okay.
Okay? So just write that down, and you need, you need a clear plan of what exists.
Okay.
What exists outside.
Old and new. I'll just put the.
Yeah, so you, one of the, you know, one of the, the first workshop that we came to, in other records, you had the existing plan, which shows a two-bedroom apartment. We'd like to have that.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna show this one, you're gonna show the twelve seats inside.
With the pergola.
You're gonna show what is clearly a patio, right? With roughly, and you're, and you have the dimensions on it.
Yes.
And make sure those dimensions stay there.
Mm-hmm.
And then remove the pergola.
Good.
Okay?
Perfect.
Okay, great. Any other board comment? Here we go. All right, let's, we can close the public comment. Motion to close public comment?
Move to close the public comment.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great.
Thank you.
So.
Do you have the A F?
Yeah. You have one? Here again, I can see, yeah. So we gotta go to, part of the code is, from the state side, is the environmental quality review, which is the impacts to the environment. You have, you know, you've got not much going on, so it's a, but we still, because in the, in the historic district, it's, it's called a type-one action, so it's a coordinated review. For your purposes, all it really means is the long form. Okay, so John will walk us through this, because you may have questions, because I said at the hearing tonight, we can kind of complete the, the form. Because part one, the long form, is, you know, it's thirteen pages, it's, it's, it asks a lot of questions, and some of them are not always clear. So John will help us make sure that you got a complete form, and then the board can, can, did the, um. Did the village board approve us as lead agency? The other night? Okay, great. B I needs to be changed. Coastal Resources.
Is there an L W R P?
We have a. Oh, you know what, but it's not, L W R P was never adopted, was it? I don't think it was ever finished. Did we adopt, John, do we, did we adopt the L W R P?
I'll check that, it would be clearly.
I don't think it was ever completed, I think there, there was a group working on it for years as part of the ma, in conjunction with the master plan.
Which we have.
Which was adopted. Okay, so maybe not. No, you, I mean, you don't.
Well, it's never come up since I've been returning.
I, yeah, I think it may need it, it was, um. It was never finalized, it was never adopted by the village board.
So why aren't C one and two filled out?
What's that? Planning zone? They're in the comp plan.
It must be a no.
Need the future?
Skip C. Well, wait, it, they kind of randomly skipped, so.
Yep.
So I, I think it's, if it's, um.
Thank you, Doc.
If it's an amendment, a local ordinance. Then it's yes.
You're on C one?
Yeah, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Right, so this isn't a legislative adoption, it's not an amendment of the plan, maybe it should be.
So it's a no.
Yeah, it's a no.
So do C two and then part. All the remaining questions in part B one.
Right.
But C three is not filled out.
Yeah, I'm filling that out now.
Oh, okay, so you're, you're, you're making sure all the little boxes are filled in, okay.
Yes, yes, I'm doing that right now.
Yeah, we figured we'd need John to help, because honestly, it's hard for the apple.
Hard for everybody.
Yeah, and most of these questions don't apply.
Exactly.
Right.
So what, the actual conversions, four hundred square feet of space? The apartment converting to the.
Yeah, much, much larger than that, it's a two-bedroom apartment.
Yeah, very, no, it's, yes, it's very small, eh, it's approximately, yes, four hundred.
Four hundred?
No, four, eh, four hundred is a studio apartment.
Forty by twenty, by, forty by ten, eh, I got thirty.
Forty by ten would be four thousand.
No, forty by ten, we have four hundred, forty by ten is four hundred.
Forty by ten? Forty by ten?
Yes.
Forty? So building that there?
That, the, the, the whole floor, the floor, the whole floor is eight hundred and thirty-five fo, eh, feet. The whole floor, it has a part where it's the boiler room, and practically, practically.
Oh, that's right, you have cutouts for the common areas, the best to build on the boiler room.
Practically, half, half of it is coffee shop, and half of it is our apartment house. Very small.
It's thirty-two.
Eh, well, the, 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 the numbers are there, so you could've.
Okay.
It's close to four hundred.
Yeah, so most issues like stormwater, traffic, sewer, water impacts, it all, none of it applies.
None of it applies.
Converting an apartment to additional restaurant, cafe. Uh, you know, hazardous ways, and increase in garbage, and. Looks like. Uh, you know, you're not expanding the footprint of the building, so there's no disturbance to the ground. All work is on the inside. I mean, the only thing is, it's located in a historic district, so any impacts, that'll be addressed by the H D R B if, in fact, the.
As a separate action?
Yes.
Yeah.
If he hasn't already obtained the approvals, I mean, they may have.
Yeah, he may have it.
He may have.
Right.
So I just marked this one up, we can put this one in the planning board's files, so we have. The more, we want, I mean, there's certainly nothing that rises to the level of requiring environmental impact.
And can, just have the apple just initially?
Sure.
Basically, just that you're accepting John's changes, because obviously, it's your representation of the impacts of your project. Which are the minimums. Thank you.
So now, your, first thing to do is obviously adopt the negative deck. That's saying that you don't need an environmental impact statement, and then once you do that, then you can decide whether you want to act on the underlying application itself.
Right, so the negative deck first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, obviously, based upon, we've all reviewed the, the type-one form, obviously, John filled it out. We know that things, obviously, the vast majority of what he filled out is not, not applicable, because it's a, it's all an interior project. So, there's obviously minimal of any impact to the environment. Do we, um, so we have a discussion on the impacts? Anything on impacts? Do we have a motion to issue a negative deck? A negative declaration, which means.
I move we issue a negative deck.
Should we, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have the underlying application. Uh, the village board has, has waived their rights for, to be lead agency under secret, so we can actually take action, take our final action on the application, we're obviously the, the lead agency on this application now. So we have the application before us for the conversion from a residential apartment, eating dining establishment, to remove the residential apartment, uh, the entire square footage is then converted to eating and dining establishment. In the B one, which has, uh, which has the parking waivers, there are twelve seats that will be shown on the plan. The, as, the parking waivers are issued, one parking waiver per three seats, that would be four. The, the past practice in the, in the B one, on Main Street, is to, is to grandfather one-in. So it would require a, a recommendation by the planning board to the village board for three parking waivers to legalize the application.
Are they taking off two for the.
That's hard, that's what I was gonna ask.
Uh, but we're not, yeah, but we're not adding, they were never.
They were never.
They were never legalized.
Got you.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's another touch that you own it, but that's a hard, hard thing for people to understand. I just had a discussion with somebody on the street about, about one. You know, so when the code changes, you gotta bring it up to the code, you know, and if you, and if, and code changes, but this was a two thousand and ten change, so anything, anything two thousand and ten or later, obviously, then it has to be brought up to the code, which is the parking waivers, which is what we're doing here tonight. But the, in fact, were you two have already bought parking waivers, you know, a couple of years ago, this really would just be a site plan amendment, you wouldn't need any additional parking waivers, it would really just be, we'd amend the site plan, we'd do the change of use.
Right.
Because you'd have enough. There is a thing in the code, it is pretty clear, but it says for the, you know, they're, they're for a one-time use. But in, but in my opinion, I mean, well, we, we haven't actually had a rule on this yet, but I think if it's the same application for same use in the same location, that is the same use, but we'll have to, we haven't run into that yet. Because typically, a change of use is a new applica, you know, new applicant, doing a new business, doing new, something new. But, that being said, none of that happened, so we're kind of, we're, we're starting from scratch and bringing everything up to code. So then it would be, uh, the application to be successful and to move forward would require our recommendation of three parking waivers to the village board. Any discussion on the application? We're pretty clear on it. Do I have a motion to approve the application? The, and just the condition, obviously, that we're gonna put on is just the standard ones, escrow is current, which I think should be fine.
H?
H D R B.
You know, the H D R B, what's the other one, so it's escrow, that's a long day.
And the parking waiver.
Parking.
Parking, no, but what's the statute, there's a couple of standard.
And the other standard?
Escrow and, um.
Parking waiver.
Obviously, the signed site plan.
H D R B.
We're gonna need to sign site plan, because, wait, what site plan, that we can sign?
Excuse me?
A site plan that we can sign, because obviously, you're gonna, you're gonna redraw this without the pergola.
Exactly, there was one, the pergola, you need the old, um.
The old one that shows, that, yeah, that shows the, the kitchen and the bedrooms and all that.
Without the pergola?
And this, very similar to this without the pergola, but showing twelve seats inside.
Okay, twelve seats inside.
Mm-hmm. Um.
And you, you want, you want me to leave those three seats out in the, in the, in the patio, or take them all away also?
Take them away.
Take them away, I'll put all the.
Just show the patio.
I'll put them all inside.
I'll put them all inside, that's it.
Yeah.
And the three parking waivers. Any, eh, anything else I should?
Nope, and then just make sure that you, you have done this manually here, like the, the, um, where you put pre-prep?
Yeah.
Don't forget that your other plan shows kitchen, right?
Yes.
So you make sure you change that to pre-prep again, in case you go to an older version.
Pre-prep.
What was your kitchen, it was your residential kitchen for the apartment, right?
But it.
This is pre-prep, yeah.
Right, this is pre-prep.
Okay, great.
Because until the health department doesn't approve, they have their ways to approve.
Yep.
Commercial kitchen, I can't consider it a kitchen.
Understood.
They, they told me, oh, the, the guy came here, he told the people what was going on, the inspector. And you could have that as pre-prep, but in the future, he told me everything that I had to be doing, so.
Right, so same story with like the pergola and the patio and the H D R B, is we don't, we don't wanna show a kitchen.
Okay, no kitchen, just pre-prep, got it.
All right.
Can I bring it, I'll bring it in Tuesday?
Yeah, hang on. So, um, so do I have a motion to approve the application?
Is this my night for all motion? I moved, we approved the application with the following contingencies, or whatever.
Very good, seconded by Arnie. Okay, roll card vote. Member Marion is absent, member Rose.
Yes.
Aye. Member Sari?
Aye.
Member Clemenson?
Aye.
Uh, and I vote aye. All right? Very good, so what happens next, so it's approved. What happens next is then we write, you need to get the stuff in, get it in by tomorrow or Tuesday. Then we'll have a resolution that, which is, the board moves, does everything by resolution, the resolution will say that we've approved this plan, we need to attach your stuff to that plan, I need to stamp it, so obviously, nothing will move forward until that. One of the conditions on the resolution is that you, um, is that you either produce this, produce the C O A, or, or do we just leave Bill to?
We need to see a copy of that problem.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we just say that we, that the planning board has to, has to receive the C O A?
Right, well, I'll just say, like, obtain any and all necessary approvals from the village historic district review board, or if already obtained, provide a copy of any.
To the planning board.
Yeah, but part of the problem before is, he thought he had approval, but he doesn't know if he has the piece of paper, so.
Right.
That's why I think we have to have the piece of paper.
But I think, but what John says covers that, he's saying.
I'm saying either you, either you provide us a piece of paper.
Okay.
Or you obtain it.
Yeah.
If it hasn't been obtained.
And then what we're gonna have to do, because obviously, we don't wanna keep, you know, compounding it, is the, the permit will issue based on that. So, um, move that along very quickly, you know, the sooner you get your stuff in, I'll get down here and I'll sign up on the plans, and we'll stamp them. And then we'll send a letter to the village board, I believe the village board meets on Tuesday? Oh, no.
Uh, yeah, no, they have a special meeting.
On?
Tuesday.
Oh, they are? You did?
I think they have a meeting next month.
Okay. I don't know if we'll make that meeting. With the parking, for the parking waiver?
I mean, I drafted the letter, I have to.
Okay, perfect, great.
Clean it up.
Great, okay.
So, I'll start late in the morning.
Okay, perfect, great.
They have all the papers filed, you want?
Uh, all the better, yeah, yeah, I get them in, and then I can swing by in the afternoon and actually take a look.
You want me to, eh, I have to give you a check for the parking waiver, or I have to wait?
No, no, yeah, no, that's after the village board, and that goes to the, to the clerk or.
Okay.
And we're gonna, we're just gonna move forward with this, I mean, I think that.
Yeah, just put that in the file.
All right. This is our.
Thank you.
Only business tonight. Anything else from the public?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
So I'm, because I don't know if Marcos caught this, because it was confusing to me, in terms of the H D R B certificate, is that something that he's gonna have to go, or you're gonna be able to do?
No, applicant has to get that.
He has to go.
Yeah, we all do, I mean, when you do any.
He's unclear whether or not he actually has it.
I understand that, so I'm not sure that he understands who he's gonna.
No, you're right.
I'd be clear on who he has to speak to right now, so there's no misunderstanding.
Who do I have to speak to specifically?
Otherwise, he's gonna go to Bill, and Bill's not the one to go to. Just trying to help you out.
Ding ding ding. What is, first of all, what is the H O?
So the historic, we have, we have a, you know, some, some villages call it an architectural review board, ours is called a historic district review board. And so work that happens in the district, they try to, try to preserve as much as they can, and have a, have a consistent look and feel, so that character of the village isn't kind of wiped away. And so, but you can start with Bill, but what you wanna ask him is, is there a certificate of appropriateness? I'll send you an email, I'll send you an email with everything, you just take it right into, and just say, is there a certificate of appropriateness?
That's proof, sorry, that's proof of the, the, the meeting supposedly that I had about, about the.
Well, okay, but don't forget, we've had meetings, and until tonight, you didn't have an approved application. So the first meeting, and even the second meeting, which we didn't have, because we had a special meeting, that didn't get you approved. Now, those are called workshops, right? So it's possible to have a meeting with somebody and not be approved. Like we, like, we had the first meeting, and talked about, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that. We then scheduled the second meeting, unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum, so we didn't meet, that was really just to go over the plans, which we would've had cleaned up then by the public hearing, that was the intent for the meeting on the eleventh, but we had to cancel. So those are called workshops, basically, just to get the application ready for a public hearing, but we're really. But we're really sensitive, and the administration is really sensitive, to getting these applications through as fast as possible, because it was taking way too long. And folks are paying rent, and folks are, you know, so that's what we're trying to do. And so, you know, it's, that comes with a certain amount of risk, and obviously, a little bit of confusion at some times. But we, I think it's in the best interest of everybody, so we move them along. So, the next thing to do is you can, I'll send you an email. Basically, you're going to ask Bill if there's a certificate of appropriateness. I mean, if you want, I can email the board, the HTRB as well. They should be able to pull their records. Bill can pull his. If there's already a certificate of appropriateness issued for the patio, then you're good. Is there any fence? There's a fence, right?
There was a fence, like I said, there was a fence by the sidewalk. I needed to move that fence to make that space patio. And that was basically the reason for the meeting. Me being, having, it'd be impossible to move that fence the distance, that distance.
So the...
To create a patio.
Not being visible to the...
Because it was original, and it was originally on village property.
It was originally, excuse me?
It was originally on village property, if I understand, that's not board order.
No, the original fence, it was, no, no, it was in the, let's say, at the end.
It was absolutely a split-rail fence that was on village property. You know, kind of the ones that look like logs? Before the stockade fence. Show the fence on the drawing too. Do me a favor, draw the fence.
The fence that I...
Yeah, just...
The actual fence, or the one that was there before?
Whatever exists now.
Oh, oh, okay.
Just now, yeah.
Okay, sure.
We don't want a time machine. We just want just now. So if there's a fence in front of that, you're saying there's a fence in front of the patio?
No, 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 no.
Oh, there's no fence?
No fence.
Nothing?
No, no.
Okay, so all that exists right now is just an engraved wood patio.
And a back fence.
And the back fence that I made, that I was told to make it a specific way. They gave me plans to make it that.
And see, because now that is all visible, it needs approval.
What the, what the historic district review board would do is saying is that anything visible from a public right away, if you can stand on a public street and see it, then that's their purview. They have a right to look at that, and to kind of say, does it meet the design standards? So if there's, so there's a fence behind the patio?
So, well, this is the line. This is like, three-dimensional, that's all. This is just the height. Let's say this doesn't exist. This line here, this was over here. There was a fence here, and I moved this fence 14 feet.
So it's behind, it's at the back of the patio?
It's the back of the patio.
Yeah, so draw it. Draw it, and then just draw a line, just draw a line to it, and just say fence.
Okay, just, see, a double line, I'll just put fence. It's the height of the fence that was over here, the same height that was in the front, when everything was closed. This is all backyard, this was closed. So I moved this here, I put this fence over here, not the same one, of course. I put the fence that I was told to make back here, 14 feet.
An approved fence in the district comes up to your waist. It's a four-foot fence.
They told me to make it the way it was.
I guess that's not your waist, unless you're super tall. It's just above your waist, not your shoulders.
Um, let's not get into the weeds.
Yeah, so, but show the fence. Yeah, show the fence, because that's another, there are a lot of people, you know, there's kind of the...
There's a big fence controversy in this town, so...
And so you need a variance, and typically, the variance are only issued in the neighbor-from-hell tradition.
One of the, I have one of those, I'm going to ask for one of those, I think I gave more than one, the plan...
We had a bunch?
I had a bunch, and I don't have any myself, that's why I need one. There you go. Thank you. So I could adjust what I was asking.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that one's not full.
Okay, yeah.
So just draw, so take the pergola off, and then just in the back, draw the fence.
This double line, okay.
And do me a favor, just put the height of the fence?
Yes.
Just put, you know, is it, are they wood boards?
Wood boards, yeah.
Just flat boards?
Yes.
So just put stockade. I'll send you an email. Stockade fence.
Yeah, stockade.
Great.
All right.
Thanks so much.
No, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I appreciate it. Good luck. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.